At this time, we'll call our November the 5th meeting to order. And I thank you for coming out tonight, joining us in this meeting. And at this time, we are asked, we will have our invitation by Reverend Scott Balken with the New Home Baptist Church in Peachland. Thank you Reverend.
Yes, sir, we will bring greetings to you from our congregation at New Home Baptist, and we are very thankful for our elected as well as our appointed officials. So, let's go to our Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for another blessed day that you've given us here, Lord. We thank you for the provisions of life and liberty and the things that we hold dear. And with the upcoming Veterans Day this coming weekend, Lord, we are very thankful to live in a free country, a country where we're able to interact and react the way we see fit. And, Lord, we're thankful for our officials, those that are elected and appointed, and we're very thankful for those men and women who serve in our armed forces, for those that have served before them and those who will serve in the future, for those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, Lord, that we can't but thank. And, Lord, we thank you that you saw fit years ago to send your son that we needed eternal life, Lord, and we thank you that he shed his lifeblood for each and every one of us that we too can live for eternity. Or that I pray for these commissioners, I pray that each and everything that's done here tonight will be pleasing and in order, will be pleasing to you, dear God. And we just thank you for the opportunity to be a unified group, that we can go out each and every day and not only live a Christian life, but we can live a life that others can see Christ through us, dear God, and we can do that with each and every part of our being. Well, we just pray tonight that you will help us be the men and women of Christ that you would have us to be, of course, in his name we pray. Amen.
Reverend Balken, we thank you, and you're welcome to stay with us.
I'll hang around a little while.
All right, thank you, and again, thank you for doing the invitation tonight. At this time, I'd like to remind each commissioner, in accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, GS 138A, if there's a conflict of interests or any item on the agenda, please let us know now.
I mean, we set that clock at the back at proper time as soon as possible.
I have 6:01, I think, what the...
6:06.
Oh, 6:06. Ms. Clark, will you take care of that tomorrow? Okay, at this time, we will have approval of the agenda by commissioners. I'll be...
Chairman, I'd like to add three things to the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We have approval of the agenda by commissioners. Any changes at this time? Okay, go right ahead.
There's three things that I'd like to add to the consent agenda. The first is a budget amendment, it'd be 2E. It's for the pet program that the animal shelter received, forty thousand dollars. The next one is 2F, it's a budget amendment for the school system, it's a correction to what we made last month, no money's changed and it's a more procedural issue on our end. And then 2G is consideration for capital funding, financing for our vehicles, for the sheriff's vehicles that we do every year, we get about four or five vehicles every year, so that's routine. But what we're asking for is a little bit more authorization for the ambulance. We are talking about potentially getting a new ambulance with the, this year, we had to do some research on that, but we thought we'd ask for authorization for that now and informing whether or not we go with that decision afterwards. But the discussion has been that we need a new ambulance, and so this consideration right now is for the sheriff's deputies' vehicles and ambulance.
Is it one package deal or two?
It's a whole package deal, authorization for all things included, however, we might not use all the authorization.
Okay, is this money already budgeted for the ambulance?
We're gonna receive it from, we're taking a loan out, like we do with everything else with the sheriff's vehicles, it's gonna be the same thing, we're asking for a little bit more because this year we're looking at maybe getting an ambulance.
Okay.
Do you have a specific case in mind?
As far as the ambulance goes?
Yes.
We do not, that's why we're gonna do the research. We didn't wanna ask multiple times, we thought we'd ask more times and let you know whether or not we move forward with it or not. So, we'll have, we'll let you know next month if we decide to go forward with it or not.
Both items under 2G.
Yes.
Okay, I have no problem with the sheriff calling the other ambulance, but if you just let us know, we might just handle it.
Those additions, I make a motion at the agenda.
Okay, was there any, was there any... Okay.
Sir?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by us. Okay, the consent, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Right here.
Okay, we have a motion on the second, all in favor, let it be known by us. Okay, thank you. Public addresses to the board, Ms. Carey. Public addresses to the board. Okay, Ms. Carol Anderson. Yeah, you just come to the board. I'm sorry.
I'm a newcomer before you have CLB. Put together a package tonight, and I sort of would like to walk you through that, and commissioners and other Anson County leaders, I'm here tonight to introduce Judy and Keith Waddell and their son, Austin, that I'm sitting beside. I asked them to come tonight, straight from the poultry barn, because we're talking about their new opportunity here in Anson County. And they will close soon on 126 acres on Robinson Bridge Road that will be developed into a pilgrims' pride, pilgrims' pride, brawler farm. They are building 1246 by 600 feet barns with foundation walls, no more curtain walls, including the latest technology and equipment. Poultry barns are now being designed to be good neighbors. With an investment of just under five million dollars, Waddell's project will add around 4.5 million to Anson County's tax base, provide jobs for contractors, electricians, raters, equipment sales, and other restaurants. Gas stations and local businesses, of course, will also profit, especially during the building stage. In your folder, a copy of the North Carolina Poultry Guidelines is on the right-hand side. And the North Carolina Foundation developed these guides, guidelines and standards in order to protect water quality and public health while promoting good relationships with the community, and to be consistent throughout the state with voluntary regulations, regulations, not laws, that are in harmony with the state and federal laws, and to make it consistent throughout all of North Carolina, not in different, not changing in different counties. One well-known guideline is that no new poultry production buildings may be constructed closer than 1,000 feet from an occupied residence. The last five and a half months were spent to locate and qualify tracts of land with the needed open acreage topography and no occupied houses within 1,000 feet. The result was the 126 Robinson Bridge Road acres, and that works. And I would venture even to say that currently, there are no other such tracts that can work in our county that are available for sale, that they are getting extremely rare. So now, the, with the regulations, and we have the, we think we've come to the finish line because they have pilgrims' consent to, as an integrator, the financing is approved, and land and house are ready to close. But last week, pilgrims, John Viles, received a letter through a local attorney from a neighbor saying the owner of this 300-acre tract across the road from where they're purchasing the 126 has a quote dwelling that now has a new 911 address on the pretense that it has been occupied. Therefore, the 1,000-foot guideline would be in violation and would not be waived by this neighbor. In a few words, that's what the attorney's letter said. So, on photo one, this so-called dwelling has a red arrow pointing to it, and the owner of the 300 acres had just found out that there would be a poultry barn built across the road, so he did mow or the weeds around and blew a road back to the big house where it is occupied. So, this, this little dwelling, we'll call it, has no driveway from the county road, no tax history, no power, no water, and is completely uninhabitable, and has been that way for years and years. And in your, on the right side, there's letters from the seller, the buyer, and the, and myself, that go into a little more detail on that, but the essence of it is that that dwelling is not occupied. Then, there, the distance from the main house, the 1900 farmhouse, to that barn is 2,600 feet, so well within the guidelines of the poultry production there. The, and that third shows that the distance from that house, the big farmhouse, down to the driveway, and then it actually, the barns are been going, are going down the road a little bit further than that. I didn't redraw that, but I wanted to have an overall view for you to see. Cliff Lee from Pilgrims reported after their investigation of the neighbor's concerns, he reported, and I quote, "Pilgrims has approved and is going forward with this Robinson Bridge farm, knowing what we know after our investigation." So, Pilgrims has made the decision to continue. All are ready to make this business happen in Anson County now. The, I would like to ask the board if any of them individually would be willing to give their written or verbal support to the Waddells to let them know you as Anson County leaders are also ready to see this farm happen. The center, the other picture, and I'm making, make this real short, that's in the middle is the locations where the barns will be located. And as you see on picture one, where we rode in, the Waddell Poultry Farm there, pin number, that's where the barns will be. And the fans will be facing the trees for the sake of this person across the road also. But, so even though they've got their ducks in a row and are able to go forward with this project, I felt like that, I just wanted to come to this body and let you know that what's going on there, and that it is hard to, hard to get the news out soon enough to help, but at least Pilgrims made their decision, and everything will go forward.
Ms. Anderson, I think this is, this is a, something that an attorney should sit down on, so I'm turning over to our attorney. With, with deep respect for you, Ms. Anderson, which you know I have, I would have to advise the board not to use your position in a business conflicted area like this. This is strictly between two private landowners and a corporation, and in this matter, I don't believe that you should, that the board would, I don't believe it'd be proper for the board to comment on this and support or against it. Also, this, this is the time when this is public address to the board, it is not for you to respond, it's all that. From a legal perspective, and with deep respect for you and you, that is my advice to the board.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will move along. Ms. Lisa Hope, you are on here for public addresses to the board, but you are also appearance, so I'll let you come out and appear us. You can come on.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Holt, I'm the executive director and founder of Feed My Lamb Ministries. Twenty years ago, 21 years ago, I started in the basement of my church, just handing out clothes to people who needed clothes on a Saturday, and it just grew from there. And I just wanted to come and let the board know, and people here in Anson County, trying to get the word out more about what we do. We've been around for 20 years, but a lot of people still don't understand what we do, and as we're faced with some challenges, I just wanted to bring them to your attention, but just to let you know how much, what impact we make in this county. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit ministry. We assist needy people, people who are struggling, crisis situations, people who have been burned out, or domestic cases where they've had to leave their homes and leave their things. We assist with food and clothing, personal hygiene items, toiletries, baby diapers, adult diapers, walkers, just about anything. We also have a thrift store that also provides things like furniture and dishes, things like that, that we get in when we have cases of people being burned out, or people have had to leave their home and leave their items. We have been supporting Anson County residents and families for 20 years, and we've been growing every year. We, for the last three years, each year, we have done over a million pounds of food and non-food items. And this is, we have spent anywhere from 18,000 to 22,000 dollars a year on the food program at Feed My Lambs. We are a ministry, we there, we listen to people, we talk with them, we share with them, we pray for them, we encourage them, and so we are a ministry, it's not just a food, about food and clothing, we are about helping people physically, spiritually, mentally, whatever ways we can help an individual or a family. And we're on track already, we've already hit the million pound in October, so we're well over that million pound again this year. And we shop at Second Harvest Food Bank in Charlotte, where we purchase our food for 18 cents a pound shipping cost. So, we get a lot of food for the ship, the 18 cent a pound shipping that we pay for. We have sent a truck to Charlotte every week, and it brings back meat and produce, and they also send us a truck just about every week, every week, that we can take one. We have outgrown the building that we are in, we've outgrown that about five years ago, but we've moved four or five different times, each time to a larger facility, and we are in desperate need of a larger facility now. And the vision is to build a new facility on the property that we purchased first of the year. The owner self-financed for us, so we are purchasing the property, and hopefully that we can get grants and funding enough to help us pay that off and to be able to look into building a new facility. We have had, since we purchased the property, we have had something unexpected to come because we've been nonprofit, we've never had to pay taxes. And we didn't know there was paperwork involved in purchasing the property first of the year, so we're looking at a $14,000 tax bill that is gonna hit us, and we have to pay by first of the year. And that's gonna take a big hit to our food program. If we have to pay that, and we, we've checked and no appealing, and we just don't think that they're gonna see it our way, we can apply for the tax exemption next year. But if you had to take that $14,000 that we're gonna have to come up with, because we just don't have that kind of money in the bank because we're not a self-profit, we are, you know, nonprofit, so we're, we're not sitting with money in the bank, but with $14,000, we could buy 79,462 pounds of food with that money. And that money stays, that food stays in this county, we only serve Anson County residents. And these are families who are struggling, they may have sicknesses, they may be lost their job, it's our seniors who have worked all their lives, and they're living on six or $700 a month. We're taking care of Ansonians, we're taking people, care of people in our county. We serve over 500 families average a month, which equates about 1,200 people, individuals a month. We have several different programs that we do, we are involved in AARP, which is a senior program, which they pay seniors who are 60 and old, 55 and older, to come and work 20 hours a week, and they get paid 725 an hour. Right now, we have two seniors that are working for us, that get paid through this state program. We also are part of the NC Work State Program, which employs young adults from age 17 to 24, and they pay them $9 an hour. Right now, we have two of those who are working for Feed My Lambs. And we could employ a lot more people, we could probably provide at least 40 jobs if we had enough funding or to pay people. And they not only come in and just provide jobs, but they learn work skills, they learn how to run a forklift, they learn warehouse duties, they learn how to use pallet jacks, how to unload trucks. So, there's lots of skills that people learn at Feed My Lambs when they come to volunteer, when they come to work. And we do use volunteers, we have lots of volunteers, we have a 90-year-old lady who volunteers three days a week, and we are her family. She comes every day looking forward, and she's getting where she leaves a little bit earlier, but, but we're her family, you know, she's somewhere that she can feel part of and be used and just hang out during the day. Our volunteers come, they come and go, you know how the volunteers, you can't count on volunteers, so that's why we need to find funding to be able to pay and provide jobs for this county. Also, the court system, they send, we have a couple lawyers that, through working with the judge, they send community service workers, people that have to appear back in court for whatever reasons, have felonies or just misdemeanors, whatever it may be, they require them to do volunteer hours, so they'll send them to us, and we'll keep track of their hours, and so they get some time in, we get volunteers that way also. And we've had some good people come through, and some have stayed longer than the recommended hours, but we've had some that come and go. Also, the schools send need community service hours, so we have kids that come in needing hours to volunteer. Right now, we employ four part-time paid staff, and that's only because we can't afford to pay full-time. I have a 42-year-old guy that's been with us for about five years now, and we pay him 80 hours a month, and that's all we can afford to pay him. But he shows up every day, and he works really hard, he has learned to drive a forklift, he's never had his license, he's never had driver's license, and he's 42 years old. But we, through a volunteer, somebody donated a moped for him, and he is being responsible, and he is having to pay that person back, he doesn't know who the person is, but we required him, in order for him to get it, he has to pay that person back, so he's learning some responsibility, he's paying his own insurance, going and making sure that that's paid, so he has a way to work now, because he didn't have any transportation to get there before somebody volunteered and stepped up and donated him a moped. There's all kinds of success stories that come out of this. One young man came through, I seen him in court one day, I was there with somebody else, and he went to school with my son, and he was in court for something, and I told him, I said, "Well, come volunteer for me." Well, about six months later, he showed up to volunteer, and he had quit school, didn't have his driver's licenses, didn't know how to do, drive a truck, didn't know how to drive a forklift. When he left the ministry, he stayed with me for years, and he went a couple times and came back, he stayed with me for probably eight years, he learned how to drive a forklift, he got his license, he got his GED, he learned how to run a forklift, he learned how to unload the trucks, and I'm talking tractor-trailers, I'm talking 45 pallets on a truck. He could run my warehouse, and he left me, and he went, he's in Arkansas running a motel now.
Oh, Lisa, we thank you for the work you're doing in Anson County, and I wish there were more we could do, but, you know, the state kinda got our hands tied, what we can do with taxes and can't do with taxes. But you can talk to our county manager, and he will, any way he can help you, he'll be glad to show you ways that might can help.
Thank you for allowing us to come before you and just share with you some of the stories and what we do.
We thank you again for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the only way too, we have to model up to do it.
Well, Mr. Manager, will you, I think Larry's been working with her, uh-huh.
Correct, yes.
Uh-huh, and if there's any way, anything they can do, they gonna do it, because there's only so many that we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lemon, our veteran service officer. Glad to see you tonight.
Good evening.
Evening.
As your county veteran service officer, I have been asked to supply a soil sample from Anson County to be placed in the North Carolina Old Hickory Division World War Two, or World War One monument that's being erected in France on the actual battle site. This monument is to honor the North Carolina National Guard unit who broke through the Hendeberg Line during World War One. Wanted to just kinda give you a little bit of history about this unit. On September the 29th of 1918, the 30th Infantry Division broke the Hendeberg Line, an important segment of the German defensive network on the Western Front during World War One. The action was part of a series of Allied assaults known as the 100-Day Offensive, which led to the Armistice of November of 1918. The 30th Division was organized from National Guard regiments from North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee, supplemented by volunteers and draftees from around the United States. It was nicknamed the Old Hickory Division because of the historic ties that all three states had to Andrew Jackson. The division was assigned to the 2nd Corps of the American Expeditionary Force, which in turn was detached and operated under the control of the British. During the attack on the Hendeberg Line, the division was part of the British Force Army. The Hundred and Nineteenth and Hundred and Twentieth Infantry Regiments, originally North Carolina National Guard units, led the assault. The Germans opened fire and inflicted heavy casualties. The attack of the Hundred and Nineteenth made little progress, but the Hundred and Twentieth captured the village of Bellicourt after heavy fighting, breaking the Hendeberg Line. This, this was a final battle that led to the end of World War One. And so we are being asked, as a county, to supply soil to this, this monument that is being erected in France. I am hoping to remove the soil from our monument, our veterans monument, on Veterans Day. So the reason why I'm here tonight is just to ask for any of the commissioners that are going to be at our Veterans Day celebration, November eleventh, if you would be part of that small ceremony to remove that soil and then replace it in a jar and send it to this, to this monument. I, I've actually got a picture of the monument, if you'd like to see it. I don't know how much. Sorry. But the soil will be sent there and will be placed inside of the, inside of the monument to honor the veterans from North Carolina.
Do we need to bring out one shovel?
No ma'am, I would have a shovel there for you. I, I just didn't want you to be shocked by that. And I also want to, want to make sure that you are formally invited to our Veterans Day celebration, which will be on Veterans Day, November eleventh. It'll be between ten o'clock and two o'clock. So we hope to see you there.
Did I read correctly, I read all of your information very impressive. John Mary, an economic developer, did he have some kind of direct relationship with this, relatives and ancestors?
That I don't know for sure.
I may be wrong.
Find out for you.
I was just curious.
I, I am sorry, I haven't heard.
Yeah, it might, might be incorrect.
Thank you, and we'll see you on P eleven.
You're doing an excellent job.
Monday, thank you for the job you're doing. Okay, Ms. Rosalind, HR Director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Evening.
Tonight, I bring before you a proposed personnel policy request that we would like to present to you guys. We would like to revise Article Four, the Recruitment and Employment Section Two of Recruitment. Including your package, you should have the Highlight Section that we are proposing to include. The main two differences that you will see is that we would like to start doing internal job postings and this will be only when it requires immediate action and it will require the approval of our county manager. If it is approved by the county manager to do an internal posting, we would do that for five working days. And then after the five working days, it will be posted throughout the county website and the Insurance Security Commission. And then we would also like to change the working days from ten to seven. Does anyone have any questions?
What's prompting the change or the recommendation for the change from ten working days to seven?
Well, I've had several, our department has asked about doing internal postings. And in doing that research for internal postings, as far as the counties that do do those, I saw where some counties have five days and I saw some have seven and then I saw some that also had ten, like we did. So I was looking at seven, since it's kind of like a midway point. Any other questions?
Have you considered going to five days as opposed to seven? And the reason I raise that point is that, as we look at the Office of Personnel Management at the federal level, there's this five days, at least five days. At the state of North Carolina in two thousand and seven, they changed their number of days for posting, which all they consist to at least five days as well. So we may want to consider going to, to five, just something for consideration.
So five days for internal and five days for external postings? Is that the recommendation?
Just a suggestion.
I think we would like to stick with the five days for internal and then seven days for the external posting, just to make sure we get enough applicants. That's part five, five. If that is the board.
Any other questions from the board on this matter?
Well, if we're, we're going to leave it the same then, maybe ten days for job posting, at least ten working days, and then five days for internal. Because I can certainly understand where, we want to leave them out there long enough so citizens will see the ad and have an opportunity to apply for the job if they so desire. Any questions?
I guess we feel like these seven days as opposed to ten is sufficient, since we're trying to make sure we get enough applicants and all. Since we, we, if I understand right, we have ten currently.
Yes, sir, we currently have ten days.
We want, we want to reduce it to seven.
Yes, sir, at internal postings.
I'm just wondering, do we feel like that seven days is going to be sufficient to get an ample number of applicants and if we're having trouble getting people to apply for jobs?
Yes, sir, I believe so, because if we don't receive enough applications, we can always extend it until opening to fill. The seven is just like the initial standpoint, so we can at least start going ahead and reviewing them. Because in some departments, we receive several applications. So by cutting it down to seven, we can go ahead and start looking at those and starting the process. But if say this is a job that we didn't get many applicants, then we can always extend it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's get the board.
I think we ought to support Mrs. Ingram, I'm sure she knows a great deal more about how this will work and how it will improve things and we would.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to make a motion that we approve the changes.
And I second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, let it be known. We have a motion and a second, any question? All in favor, let it be known by I. Oppose, unanimous, thank you. Thank you for the job.
Can I say that?
Okay, at this time, we have appointments. We have one this month, the Ways for Planning and Adjustment Board, the ETJ Board, asked if we reappoint Mr., I saw the name, Mr. Lee Cable.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Lee Cable, okay? We have a motion and a second, all in favor, let it be known by I. Oppose, okay, unanimous, thank you. Our manager report.
There's two things. First, audit update.
Mr. Chairman, board members, you've got some correspondence in front of you there from Alan Thompson, who is the CPA of our firm, Thompson Price, and is there, is it his intent to be here to present our latest audit findings to you at the December meeting? Are there any other questions about that? I know we've been trying to keep, keep the board and the public updated on a monthly basis about that, so.
He'll be here in December.
Yes, sir.
And this isn't a question, but I wanted to ask all the commissioners if we could ask our clerk to get a card. He's a good guy, but he's been a little ill. And if we could just send him a, a card, just saying that we, you know, he's in our prayers and.
I think that'd be very thoughtful.
Thank you.
The second thing, Chairman, is the Land Use Conference of Plan. I have it in your packet, I believe there's a copy of the schedule that's coming up over the next month. And I think it would be sent in on the seats of everyone in the audience this afternoon, this evening. In order to make this Land Use Conference of Plan, to deliver better than can, we're going to need participation from the public, participation for citizens who live here, care about this place, who want this place to grow and become better than what it is today. Every day we want to get better at it. This plan is one of the first things that we can use to start doing that. There are five locations of open houses that you can go to the next month. I, I ask that everyone give an opportunity to go to at least one of those. Information will be the same, there'll be a survey asking about what do you hope Anson County becomes in twenty years? And what are some things you'd like about Anson County? It'd be nice to hear these things. And then when we have a plan completed, you can present it to the board in September of next year. But this is the beginning stages of the Land Use Conference of Plan. I just want you to take a look at that schedule and please plan to attend at least one of those open houses.
So this is a good time the community can come out and tell us what they want through a bike in twenty years.
In twenty years. That's it, yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, and this is a dumb question, I ought to know. I'm just curious, okay, with MacFarland, do they get the information through Morgan? To be made aware of this? And then Burnsville, they get theirs through Ansonville, is that correct?
That's how, that's how we're going to have it scheduled, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Manager, could you give us a brief update on the DSS building project, please?
Okay, yes. The DSS building right now is currently a party. Again, we still believe that the best process for the county financially is to rent a building. However, we've had some issues, obviously, with the whole Walmart building being occupied by what will be Roses there in the near future. But we still think this is the best process to go for. So we're going to put that to RFP, find if there's anything that we've overlooked in this county that could fulfill our needs that we can rent. If that turns out, if we get a negative on that, we'll pivot our direction. But right now, we'll start acting as if the renting option is the best option for us. So we have RFP, RFP that's been drafted, we are taking a look at it, making the corrections, and we hope to have that out within the next month, two months.
All right, thank you.
Were you finished with your report?
I was.
Okay, I don't have anything, but the only thing I had in my report was I have each commissioner that can come out on Monday and let's support Ms. Lemon in her program at the Paul.
I'm sorry, I won't be able to, I got a appointment, I got to see my doctor Monday. I feel bad not being here, but that's something I got to do.
We understand. Okay, any other commissioners concerned?
Not a concern, I want to make an announcement and I want our superintendent to come to the podium. We want to thank him. On tomorrow night, we will be having a youth revival at the middle school. And he, maybe he can tell us exactly all the details. But one of the youth, they came to him and some of the others, they, a group they said, the Early College. And Ms. Kayla Gattis, and I don't see her, and I thought she was going to be here with me tonight. But the school has opened up the middle school, could you tell us, Mr. Frank?
Yes, it's, it's part of our partnership with the community that's allowed through our policies and through the legal avenues. We have the flexibility to allow the facility to be used for faith-based programs as well as other business-oriented programs. And so certainly when young people want to get involved, we try to support them. There's been a number of youth rallies conducted by various church groups over the last few years that's been legally allowed. And, and so we, we feel like it's the building that belongs to these youth. And if they want to utilize it in that fashion, we try to ensure that it's clean and available and safe for them to participate in these events at.
And we are opening doors tomorrow night at five thirty. The guest speaker is Pastor Steve Allen. It's just one night, I ask if you guys don't have anything to do, we need to support them, especially when they want to do things of this nature.
Well, I, I, just to mention this, I'm very proud of a lot of our youth. They are now recognizing elected officials. You know, they're saying, that's a commissioner, that's a board member, you're a superintendent. And that's what we want to instill in them is to cultivate their skill sets so they can be the future leaders for our county. That, that's very important. Not calling any names, but some of us are getting younger. I changed my hair color recently, a reflection of my age, I believe. But thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
At this time, we have a closed session, matter. We need to go into closed session under General Statute one forty-three, dash three eighteen, dash eleven. Second, I have a motion and a second to go into closed session, all in favor, let it be known by I. Oppose. Thank you, everyone. Please read, thank you.